I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic of our citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, anyone sign up to speak tonight, Mr. Hedges?
No, no, I'm good.
Mayor? All right, and you should have the meeting minutes from April 15th. We need to read them. Are changes in additions to which is correct here? There are changes on the table motion to approve the minutes as presented. Two moves.
Second.
Question or comment? Go call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
All right, Mr. Hedges has a few items tonight. If you missed more, I'm going to defer the first item to Finance Director Lyons. Give you the 2020 audit, and Helen A is on line to make some comments. Lori?
Good evening, I would like to introduce you to Jen Martenson. Jen has been on the audit team for a couple of years with Lauterbach and Amen, and she is going to present the audit for us.
Jen, are you with us?
There we go, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, it's you.
Perfect, thank you. As Lori mentioned, I'm Jen Martenson with Lauterbach and Amen. I'm happy to be here to present the audit for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2020. I do want to start by thanking Lori and the finance team for all of their hard work during the audit process. It definitely takes a coordinated effort and significant effort of getting prepared for us. So, we appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. As the board knows, an audit of these financial statements is required by state statute. And really, the goal of that audit is for us to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements presented this evening. And we have done that. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which is just a clean audit opinion. It's the highest opinion that we can issue. And it really just means that the financial statements presented this evening are materially correct. So that opinion, if you want to review that in further detail, is found on page two. So I will periodically mention page numbers as we go through, if you want to refer to those later. One section I do want to point out for the board is management's discussion and analysis. So that's going to start on page four. And it's really just a handful of pages, a nice narrative summary of the financial information to follow. So that audit report in front of you, as you can see, is over 100 pages. So that section really takes that audit report and breaks it down into 10 easy-to-digest pages. Again, with key highlights for the year, as well as information on changes from last year to this year. So really, just a good place to spend some time, to get all that financial information summarized there in a condensed format. To speak to some of those highlights for the year, overall net position for the village did decrease approximately 3 million, with ending net position of 74 million. And I do want to remind the board that that number does include your long-term capital assets, as well as your long-term debt and other liabilities. So moving on then to your governmental fund balances, which is really going to show your changes in revenues and expenditures for the year. The overall increase in governmental funds in total was approximately 6,000, with ending fund balance of approximately 3.6 million, of which 1 million is unrestricted for use. Speaking specifically to the general fund or the operating fund of the village, there was a surplus this year of approximately 123,000, with ending fund balance of 1.5 million. And to review those governmental funds in more detail, if you would like, that can be found on pages 22 and 23. For your business-type funds, or your enterprise funds, which is going to be your water and sewer and your garbage funds, that again, speaking to net position, overall decrease of approximately 233,000, with ending net position of approximately 46 million. And that can be found on page 27. Starting on page 31, you're going to see a large section of the audit labeled notes to the financial statements. This is just additional required reporting information, a lot of detail there. You'll find information on your capital assets, long-term debt, as well as further information on your IMRF net pension liability, as well as your police pension liability. Finally, I do want to point out your budget-to-actual schedules. I'll start on page 75. And speaking again to the general fund, revenues for the year did come in over budget, and expenditures did come in under budget, which is where we saw that surplus. There are a few other funds that did come in over budget, which is noted in that management letter, that smaller packet that was provided. Additionally, I'd be required to communicate to the board if there were any disagreements during the audit, difficulties with management, or other red flags. Happy to say that there were none. We did have a handful of recommendations that were provided, as I mentioned, in that management letter. There were no new recommendations for this year or changes there. The only change you'll see will be related to those funds over budget, just showing the new funds for this year in that comment. So, as I mentioned, clean audit opinion. We commend the finance team and their hard work in preparing for us. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for the board?
Just to be clear, what I'm understanding, on page 75, so our spending went $670,000 under budget, is that correct? Am I looking at that properly? A budget of 4.9 million, total expenditures 4.92, and actual of 4.253?
On page 75, yes, that's what I'm seeing as well.
Wow. Cool, well done. We definitely put a freeze on spending for the majority of the year because of COVID, anticipating more revenues.
That's unbelievable.
And revenues, well, of course.
I have a question on page four, on that summary. The third whole point where it starts to talk about the village's net position, it shows that we have roughly 2.55 million subject external restrictions. And that's tied to payments of vehicles, things like that, long-term debt. Am I reading it correctly that we have a negative 1.1 million dollar unrestricted net position?
Yeah, so if actually you go to page 16, I think that'll help kind of break down for you where some of those restrictions are. So you'll see the restricted areas, starting with police impound fees and so forth. And yes, there is an unrestricted deficit there. And really, that really just means that if today the village needed to pay off all of their debt, including the police pension liability and your IMRF pension liability, which is not at all likely, and liquidate all assets, that it would not cover.
Understood. And if I'm reading this right, in 2019, that was a positive number, or was that also a negative number?
Unfortunately, do not have 2019 in front of me.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on page seven. Number four, it was 2019 unrestricted debt, unrestricted to be 1.63, 2020 to be negative 1.1 million. So we put 1 million dollars negative?
I can, just from a brief look at this, I can say that the majority of that likely is in your change in your pension liability for police pension, based on changes in benefits. There's more information on that. Give me one minute, please. On page 72 and 73. So really, you can see there that bottom line, which is your net pension liability in 2019 was 2.1 million, and in 2020 did jump to 5 million, which again, that number is included in your net pension, or in your net position number. So I would assume, just based on a brief look, and we can definitely look into it more, that that would be a big reason for that jump.
So the big reason for that, Erin, is the fact that in January of 2020, there was a legislative change that moved nine of our police pension recipients from tier two to tier one. And that increased their benefits by that much. So when the actuarial report was completed, that's why our liability jumped.
Okay. And that caused the $2 million flood?
Yes.
Yeah, if you see on that last column there, under 43020, the third line down, that 2.7 million that's added in there, for your change in benefit terms, is addressing that.
Sorry, which page?
That's on page 73.
Okay. Okay. And that was through state legislation?
Yes.
Any other questions for the board?
All right. I guess just one last one. In your official opinion, is the village in a healthy financial situation?
So it's hard to say that in comparison to what, right? Obviously, the unrestricted deficit is not an immediate concern, but something to obviously monitor. I think the only other thing that I would point out, because there is a healthy fund balance, 3.6 million overall for your governmental funds, as we mentioned, 1.5 million is unrestricted. The only thing I would point out is the TIF fund, which I know that one, that piece, it's just not self-supporting at the moment. But other than that, no major concerns that we've seen.
Any other questions or comments? Very much. There may be actual doubts there.
This, I want to mention to me, I just want to, again, thank Lori and Helen A for their work, and also just tell you that after many years of being behind in our office, we are now officially caught up. This has been uploaded to the controller's office and the current holder. And you'll begin receiving monthly reports at the end of this month through every month. So thank you.
Excellent. The next item, Mr. Mayor, is who would ask your consideration for a resolution approving final development, a final development plan for neighborhoods K, L, and M in the Prairie Ridge Development, subject to the submission of a final landscape plan for review and approval by the village. I would like to add that that landscape plan has now been submitted and is under review by EEI. You have before you an agenda supplement from Attorney Schuster. Chairman Brian Maroc is here with us. You have also his memorandum regarding that hearing. And you also, we also have Mr. Dan Olson on the line with us to answer any questions. This is a pretty straightforward request, and I would ask Attorney Schuster to give us a brief summary.
Thank you, thank you. So, this, these three neighborhoods were platted together a long time ago, 2007 or '08. They are now ready to, for marketing and construction. So they were planted at a preliminary basis back in the day, and are now updated for a final plat. So no lots can be sold until there's a final plat of record. You'll notice that neighborhood M does not have separate individual lots. The reason for that is it was originally intended for condominium development. When you have a condominium, you don't have separate lots. I think, and Mr. Olson can address that, I think Crown is planning to change that sometime in the near future. But these two neighborhoods plus M, whatever's going to happen with that, would then be marketed by Crown and would be an expansion of the Prairie Ridge development. It was recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. Mr. Maroc can comment on that.
Any comment, Mr. Maroc?
I would actually defer to any questions anyone may have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Rainfall intensity requirements have changed. Crown and Mr. Olson say their grandfather did. I don't think Mother Nature is grandfather. If we have an issue with the water amounts changing, what they currently have, is EEI willing to sign off on this and agree that this is acceptable?
That was a topic of discussion, that was that of, actually, Crown Development as well. It was my understanding that due to the original plat, the original presentation in 2007, 2008, the development and design of that proposal still stands under requirements at that time. If I also recall, there were three additional items to be included with their final proposal to the village board. I believe that was one of the items that the ideas have to actually provide.
If I may, just to cut, I'll just add, as I believe you're aware, in 2015, the county stormwater requirements did increase. But any project that was planned prior to 2015 is grandfathered into the county requirement. So this, this does meet the current requirements. And I think Dan Olson would also comment, as well as Tim Paulson would like, on the fact that this retention is adequate to this project.
I'd like to have Tim comment on it, and I'd like it to be on record.
Sure.
Because if any of these subdivisions flood, I don't want to come and back to this board. I'd like to have EEI comment on it, and I'd like it to be on record that they're approving it.
Tim Paulson, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, so the, you know, the stormwater management plan was approved with the engineering plans when this was first submitted under the, and it was under the Kane County Countywide Stormwater Ordinance, which went into effect in 2001. When the ordinance was updated in 2019, June of 2019, the village was able to submit the list of developments that they had been approved, and their stormwater plans had been approved, who would be exempt from any requirements in the new stormwater ordinance. So this, the, you know, the stormwater requirements were already set and established, and approved for this development, so it was exempt from the requirements of the new ordinance.
Tim, will you speak to the fact that EEI believes these are adequate, detention requirements are adequate?
Yes, so the, we do believe the detention requirements are adequate for the, you know, 100-year design event. In addition, when we, when we design the, when the improvements are designed, there is allowances made for emergency overflow routes through the subdivisions to convey water in the event you have a rainfall event, a storm event, that exceeds the design storm capacity, which is the 100-year design event. So while the rainfall numbers have changed, and if this were designed from scratch today, the detention basins would be larger. It is still a safe and effective system based on the, you know, emergency overflow and overflow route requirements for the subdivision.
I do have a follow-up on that. This is a replating, taking away townhomes and the square footage and redesigning it for single-family homes. With that replat and that redesign, did EEI run a new stormwater study to ensure that the old detention designs and the old numbers do adequately provide stormwater protection on the new plat with single-family homes versus the townhomes that were originally in this?
Trust me, Kelly, if I could address that, please. First of all, the minutes before you tonight does not replat anything. These are the original plats from the original subdivision. So nothing's being downzoned at this point. Crown doesn't intend to come back just for neighborhood M at a later time. And downzone that from townhomes to single-family homes, that would be downgrading and zoning, and that would require less detention than would have been in the original plan. But that is not before you tonight.
Okay, because that's in the, from the, from Mr. Maroc?
It was part of the discussion, yes, about the next action that will take place. But that action has not been applied, that's under consideration right now by Plan Commission, it's not downplaying yet.
Okay, but when we look at an entire development, stormwater system, acts as one unit, whether it's developed now or not developed now, do my questions still hold?
Right, so the answer to your question is, the two, the two neighborhoods are under consideration, the three neighborhoods are under consideration tonight, K, L, and M are not changing at all. The plat's not changing at all. M will come back at a later time before you, and that will change, and it will be downzoned, so it will be fewer homes and therefore less detention requirements.
Are these the only three that have not changed from the original plan? Neighborhood?
Not sure I understand your question.
So K, L, and M are not changed from the original plat?
Correct. That's the only thing that's under consideration today.
Okay, but my question is, going forward, all the rest of the neighborhoods have changed from the original plan?
Not at this point, no. Everything remains the same, unless Crown comes in again and asks for changes again. And at this point, they're not asking for any changes. Dan has been answering a question at the Plan Commission about future plans for, and he's a very staff prior to the Plan Commission. So we're aware that they do plan to come back and downzone again, and from townhomes to single-family homes. So that's the only change that we anticipate at this point. If you'd like to ask Mr. Olson, he could speak to what the plans may be in the future, with the remaining 1,500 homes, I believe. But at this point, the village is not aware of any further changes.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Jay. And you, you said what I was going to say, actually. So, so the stormwater report that was originally submitted and approved under the old ordinance anticipated townhomes on neighborhood M, which obviously is higher density, more runoff. So we are currently considering, as Jay had mentioned, you know, downzoning that, which would reduce the runoff, you know, in that area. But we will be required to submit a new stormwater report for that change. And that is, that is the first, you know, change that we are contemplating for Prairie Ridge at this time. Obviously, if we make any other changes in future, future neighborhoods, we'll have to, you know, submit new stormwater reports for that. If it's different than the preliminary plat, that would require us abiding by the new stormwater ordinance.
And answer your question? Any other questions regarding the K, L, and M? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 21-05, a resolution approving a final development plan for the planned residential development of neighborhoods K, L, and M in the Prairie Ridge subdivision. Make your motion. Okay.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next thing I would ask is your consideration of a motion authorizing the village manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Flood Brothers for refuse recycling services, as recommended by the Village Services Committee. You have in your packet an agenda supplement for myself, as well as the minutes from Trustee Kelly from the Village Services Committee. I would like to thank the Trustee Robinson and Trustee Coe for the time they spent with us preparing the listed requirements, and also for Trustee Kelly, who will speak, all three members will speak later, but conducting the survey and telling them what our residents are really interested in. A lot of thought was put into this before we went out with quotes, and then more thought was given to it after we received the quotes. So just briefly, let me say that the village's current contract with Waste Management ends June 30th of this year. Waste Management submitted preliminary pricing on February 18th that represented a $5.80 increase, or 25% increase of the current residential rate, a 22.71 per residential customer, with a 3.5% annual escalator for the five-year contract. At the request of the Village Services Committee, proposals were solicited from three additional companies, Flood Brothers Lakeshore Recycling and Prairie Land Disposal, Inc. All three proposals were substantially lower than the proposed pricing from Waste Management, so Waste Management was invited to submit a formal proposal, and all four companies did submit proposals. Attached, you have a summary, a spreadsheet summarizing the four proposals, including regular residential and senior pricing for the five-year period. The cumulative total building from, excuse me, Flood Brothers and Lakeshore was substantially lower than Waste Management, well below Prairie Land. Flood Brothers and Lakeshore pricing were pennies apart, and their rates effective 7/121, and both proposed 2% annual increases, resulting in total cumulative costs that were also close significantly. With that in mind, staff analyzed both proposals to be, excuse me, to verify that they matched or exceeded services offered under the current contract with Waste Management, and we verified references with surrounding communities. Further, staff evaluated transition planning, traditional and social media marketing, customer service capabilities, and their ability to deliver quality services to village residents. Based on this criteria, for 2721, staff recommended the Village Services Committee enter into a five-year contract with Flood Brothers. And I will defer at this point to Trustee Kelly for comments about the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. First, thank you, Mr. Hedges and staff for leading the proposal process, the entire evaluation, for checking with your local counterparts and surrounding communities to get their feedback on services rendered. I also want to start by saying thank you to Waste Management and the services they've provided. They've been a partner in the community for a long time. And especially to Mr. Von Krishner, who is our Waste Management Representative, who has been a great partner with Mr. Hedges, as well as with myself over the past two years that I've served on the Village Services Committee. In evaluating the, the process, when talking about the process, one of the things that the Village Services Committee wanted to make sure to do is ask the residents for their feedback on the current service levels, and how they were satisfied or unsatisfied with the current refuse and recycling programs. In the board packet, you'll see the results of that survey. Within two days, we had almost 300 responses, or 250 responses, so there was really good results. Replies of that. I do want to say that the vast majority of the residents were satisfied with the services received. In fact, overall satisfaction rating was a 4.3 out of 5 stars, 5 being the highest level of satisfaction. So when we talk about the process that we went into, it wasn't because there was an issue or a satisfaction level, at least not from being reported from the community. I think we would have one-offs that would happen, that would be reported to Mrs. Vasquez, and then they would be remedied. When we entered into this and we started considering it, there were two things that came out. And one thing I learned especially is that for our residents, according to the survey, services were one of the top pri, or the top priority, cost was second, but they were both pretty close. So when we approached this, the one thing that we talked to Mr. Hedges about is when we are comparing proposals, we wanted to ensure that the services that residents would receive were at or above the level that they were currently getting as far as the types of offerings. So not just refuse and recycling, but we currently enjoy something called Agador Recycling Program. There's bulk pickup, there's a lot of options that come with what our residents are currently paying for. And I believe Trustee Coe uses, let's compare apples to apples when we're looking at it. When we looked at all of the services offered, I think that's when Mr. Hedges and the, and the Village Services Committee started to say there were three that really were similar, or the same, at the level of service, or at, or more. And at the end of the day, at least my interpretation of the meeting, is that it really came down to price. It wasn't a lack of satisfaction. The services, as we'll talk about, and Mr. Hedges will talk about, the proposal will remain the same if not, well, we will still remain the same level of services offered to the residents and the communities. The price is just significantly less. And the references that Mr. Hedges checked on reported that they, the local communities were very satisfied with the services they received from Flood Brothers as well. So those are the comments I wanted to provide as far as the process that the Village Services talked about, and the survey that, one, I want to thank the residents for filling out, it's very educational. And then again, Mr. Hedges for running that. And with that, I'll turn it over to their Trustee Coe, or Trustee Robinson, whatever.
Sure. As Trustee Kelly had just mentioned, cost was a big factor in this, not only to the committee, but to the community through the survey results. And just running the quick numbers, if we were to maintain our services with waste management, the average, well, the rate that a regular-rate citizen would pay, would be paying would be $28.22. Flood Brothers would charge $19.95, so you would see a, we've saved $8.27 in year one by switching over, or by recommending switching to Flood. And you look at five years from now, the savings would be over $10. And the senior rate that Waste Management would offer five years from now is actually more than the regular rate that Flood Brothers would offer five years from now to our residents. So we took that into consideration as well. We also appreciated the fact that during our meeting, we could actually, we actually called up the question to Flood Brothers, and it was answered. We felt the customer service was going to be there, we were going to be, have a contact person that we can deal with, and get an answer when we need an answer. So we felt very good about that, and we, another topic that we discussed was the the family ownership mentality of the company. We are, we know a lot of our residents do appreciate that the small-town values that hamper. that the small-town values that Hampshire, that we hold on to here, and we feel that a family-owned company that will serve us well would fit right in with those values. So trustee Coates, I mean.
You pretty much took half the line. Appreciate it.
We got to talk before the meeting.
I will say that customer service level that trustee Robinson brought up, we have that right now with Waste Management, Mr. Krishner, that I talked about beforehand, and that's one of those levels of service we talked about, and we wanted to make sure we continued, whether with Waste Management or somebody else. So knowing that we also have that with Flood Brothers was an important factor.
Right, and we felt we could get that with Flood and save $8.99.
And the savings is a month per home, just so everybody knows. When we look at it as a community, and Mr. Hedges ran the numbers, the difference is almost, well, it's $338,000 in year five for the residents, cumulative savings for the community, and we felt that that was important, knowing that the services were going to be the same.
No, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, is that we do have Michael Flood, the sales manager for Flood Brothers, on the line with us, and his cousin, the president. I will admit, I'm having a little trouble keeping track of all the Flood Brothers. I spoke with Kevin Flood, who I believe is the CEO, and I believe it's Brian Flood. I believe it's the president who's on the line also. Michael, would you like to introduce your president and say a couple of words?
Thank you, Jay, and thank you, village president and staff and trustees. I'm also joined by my cousin Kevin, our CEO, my cousin Bill, our president, my father Bob, our vice president. You know, we thank you for the opportunity to put a proposal together and the extensive review that you guys put into it. It's important for us to be a partner of the community, so being family-owned and operated is very important to us in keeping that family legacy, and having the ability to not only reach out to myself, my cousin Kevin, Bill, my father, or anybody within our, our family, but also on our team, and having a local call center, we feel is going to be very important to the community and the residents of Hampshire. We're excited for, you know, to hit the ground running and begin the transition process and provide a seamless transition for the residents. And we understand, you know, as stated in the survey, the, the service was, was very pleased, you know, residents were pleased with the service, and we're excited to not only meet that but exceed it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions for the board? No, sir, thank you. All right, then I will entertain a motion to authorize the village manager to negotiate and execute a waste and recycling agreement with Flood Brothers based on the attached proposal. So move. Second. Any questions? They're coming. Roll call, please.
Mr. Prejekki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coates.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Mayor, the next item we would ask is your consideration of a motion to release the performance guarantee for Stanley East project. The project is not completed with a couple of outstanding matters, but we would like to release, reduce the bond, and I would refer to some thoughts, give us a brief summary.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So Stanley East, the project, there are two construction guarantees in place. One is for the improvements in the right-of-way. That involves the entrances onto the roads and the utility connections for sewer and water. So those have been completed for, those have been completed for over a year, and so we are recommending release of that letter of credit, full release of that letter of credit. And then there's a second performance guarantee they have for the detention facilities under the Stormwater Ordinance. And those improvements are not complete. Primarily, there's a asphalt structure that's not complete, and the restoration of the basins is not complete. So we are recommending a reduction of that letter of credit from $72,255 down to $21,660, which leaves enough covering the letter of credit to cover those uncompleted items.
Any questions? So we're going to release the full right-of-way credit, letter of credit, and then reduce the detention facility letters of credit?
Correct.
From $1,600, two parts of this motion? Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the release, or reduction of the letter of credit for the right-of-way, and then reduction in the detention letter of credit from $72,255 down to $21,660 for the Stanley Tool Project. So move. Any questions? They're coming.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coates.
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we've now asked for your consideration of a motion to waive the village bidding requirements to approve the acquisition and financing of a street sweeper at a cost of $228,158. You have in your packet an agenda supplement for myself, and I'm going to admit that I'm not an expert on sweepers, but superintendent Dave Stare is, and as well as trustee Coates, so he's agreed to back me up a little bit on this one. But I will tell you the numbers, and we have a great deal, frankly. You'll recall that in this year's budget, as well as in the village's first three-year capital budget, we are now financing pretty much all of our equipment, either through leasing or terms rather than paying cash, as we did for a couple of snowplows last year. This minimizes the cash impact on the villages and allows us to plan better over time. And so the capital budget does include, as well as the regular budget, $74,920 for debt service that would be a 20% down payment, and then terms of a seven-year term for 3% estimated from a local bank. That's what finance director Lyons estimates our financing will be. Under analysis, we received four quotes, excuse me, three quotes, all of which are demos. The first quote, the first quote, which is the low quote, is from RNOW, Inc. It's a 2019 demo of an A9 monsoon freightliner chassis with stainless hopper and sewer cleaning attachment that costed $228,158,000, which is on hold for the village and will be delivered early next week, maybe as early as tomorrow. As you've heard at previous village board meetings, they've been holding this, this machine for us, this piece of equipment for us now for almost two months. One of the, as you see in the next, the next bullet point, another demo that they had, 2020 demo, was sold and is no longer available to the village. The third quote we received was from Standard Equipment Company for a 2020 Elgin Crosswind Sweeper, a small non-stainless hopper of $242,454. That one, as of today, is also no longer available. And I do want to just add that our fleet manager at Enterprise does not recommend that we lease a piece of equipment like this, because we intend to use it until it dies pretty much 20 to 25 years, so long-term leasing would not really be a viable option. And they can really not help us with that. They did, they did look at the marketplace and told us that at least times for a machine like this, a new machine would be nine to 12 months. So with that, I would ask your consideration and ask trustee Coates if he would like to add anything.
So you guys know the problems we've had with the Johnson. The sewer sucker that's on the truck don't work. Your shop back at home, something picks up more than what the street sweeper does. We saw pictures at the last board meeting, the broom falls off, then you got to get help to put it on. This has a stainless steel, it says a lifetime warranty on it. Well, you got 200 hours on it, on the motor, so it's new. It's relatively new. My recommendation would be to jump on it, or we just keep putting 80, 90 grand a year into the old one. We couldn't even, we couldn't even give that to a third world country. They won't even take it.
You can put it in the history museum.
Then to Tampa. We need to get it. So we've got a lot of leaf, a lot of trees that have grown. People are still blowing them in the streets, still going in the sewers. They can't suck them out of the sewers anymore. The thing don't work.
So what are we doing with the old one? Seriously?
Want to buy it?
Scram them?
Actually, we talked about that just briefly. Nothing has any value of such scrap value. We might keep it for parts.
Actually, yeah, I do.
And also, so you guys know, they're going to fly, the person that's going to be in charge of working on it, they're going to fly them down to Atlanta or Alabama or something to their factory, and they're going to go through the maintenance procedures with them. So when they're done, they know how to service it.
My four-year-old has been asking me for weeks when we're getting the new street sweeper, so I'll take the old one. He'll keep up. I got a dollar.
As long as you don't block the sidewalk when you park it, you get it.
Got it.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, then I will entertain a motion to waive the village bidding requirements and authorize the purchase of a 2019 demo A9 monsoon on a freightliner chassis from RNOW at a cost of $228,158. So move. Second. Any questions? They're coming. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki.
Aye.
Mr. Coates.
Yes.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before I ask this next item, I do, I'm going to ask you again to waive the public bidding requirements. I want to explain that just a little bit, as the board knows, but also for everybody else in the audience. The public bidding requirements require us to create a sealed bid requirement and post a notice and then a time period for people to quote. And in most of these cases, these are specialized services. In this case, coming up, we have only two local vendors who really, when you do paving projects of this size, we only get quotes from these two companies, from Champion and Paving. So we have gone out for quotes, and we have negotiated in some cases, as we, as we will with the, with Flood Brothers as well, we'll final, negotiate the final contract. So I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're not working hard to get the best pricing we can, but sometimes the public bidding process can actually be more expensive and not result in any additional quotes. So I just want to explain that we are seeking the best pricing we can available, and in these cases, it does require that the board waive the actual public bidding requirements. So with that, I'll go on to say that we would now ask for a motion to waive the village bidding requirements and approve a contract with Champion Paving in the amount of $61,200 to repave the tubing in this parking lots. I'll just give you a brief summary. The, in the village budget includes $61,000 for repaving and restriking of the two village parking lots, deciding it's not in the village's capital plan. So we'll replace the $69,000 that's in that budget for repaving Duchess Lane. Again, the three-year capital plan is the guideline for the village board to consider. And in this case, with street skate coming up, we'll be depending on those two remote parking lots during construction as well as after construction. So we'd really like to get them paved. This construction will start next week and will be completed within 10 days, so well before construction starts. That's the guarantee that we receive from Champion Paving. So that's why it will also, this will include completely removing a parking lot and providing new construction of a new lot, so not just adding paving on top, and it will be newly striked as well. So with that, I would ask your consideration. Both lots? Yes, both lots. Any questions or comments? All right, then I will entertain a motion to waive the village bidding process and authorize the village manager to enter into a contract with Champion Paving Corp. at a amount of $61,200. So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Coates.
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right, public works has an item.
Public Works. Oh, you've got in your packet the Public Works report for the month. We got a shortage of steel currently, so our Public Works building is...
Being negotiated.
Being negotiated. Thank you. No idea when the steel's going to get back online. So there's aluminum shortage early as well.
There's everything shortage.
Yes. So.
Thank you, sir. EDC, we haven't met since we got together last time, but we had a meeting. But it's not a little. Like I said, we haven't met since, I gave a report, I'm not asking.
We haven't met yet. Not much else to tell you.
Except, we do have a meeting next Wednesday, that I expect Toby to be at, if that's on. And so we continue to make progress on the three areas that I told you we were going to be focusing on, entrepreneur support and endorsement, building the ambassador program, which G. Mayor, our director of community, which was here today, is helping us with. And then we're looking at just making suggestions or thinking about futures of land development, ultimately, so that we think that would ultimately support both businesses as well as residents. So we have our meeting next Wednesday, so everybody is welcome to come. Don't believe what you read on Facebook. You are allowed to come hear what we say. As much as you want, we're wide open, and we'd love to have as many people. Other than that, is it, yeah, see, there we go. People are already starting to hear. It must be, it must be the toy might work this way. This is the color of Tampa, just so you guys know. Any further, sir? At this time, no. We're just excited about the street skate. So obviously, it's a big field, big time for us. I just want to publicly, since this is my last time on this, in this seat, is I do want to publicly thank Jay and Freddie Vescally, and Josh Ray, and all the members of the board here who helped get this across the finish line. It's not easy. It took us a very long time, and it was dicey propositions, and it took a lot of effort and energy to get that done. And so I just want to publicly thank everybody. It was, I think the village residents, over the course of time, will come to love the developments that we make. If not, I'm moving, because... Just kidding, it's going to be worse. But outside of that, it's... My dad said...
Two items.
Two items.
Okay, so we'll do a small reimbursement of $94.02 to be paid on or before May 12, 2021. Any questions? Motion, please.
I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in a grand total of $94.02. So move. Second. Any questions? They're coming. Roll call, please.
Mr. Coates.
Aye.
Ms. Klein.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Prejekki.
Aye.
I suppose.
And our regular accounts payable, $408,894.69 to be paid on or before May 12, 2021. Yes, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I know it's minimal, we'll pay for it. How, you know, how many more payments do we have to settle up with them?
So it's, that's kind of unclear, but some of the smaller permits, like sheds and fences and those types of things that were started during, you know, our period of engagement with them are still being completed. So they're still completing those. We paid them upfront for, what do I want to say? We collected upfront from the customers, they received, the permit would be an inspection number on it, so there's just a few left, I would imagine, so.
Thank you.
Mine, mine is one.
Can you go ahead and go there?
They want me to finish the landscaping.
So do we.
So, I'm going to tell you. Any other question? Really?
No question.
Not that curious, this, we're curious. Are we paying off, this is page seven? Because I didn't look at this when I reviewed, I didn't notice it. It should have $129,000 we're paying off. Well, that's a pretty big, we just...
That's, that's from the sewer expansion. That's a semi-annual loan payment to the IEDA.
I understand that.
Twice a year.
Twice a year. You've asked twice a year.
For four years.
Well, I will keep asking as long as I'm on this board, and my, you people out there. You people out there.
The citizen comment.
Set that. I can still come down. Someone text me.
Any other questions?
Page 10.
Page 10.
The Met American Energy Service, it does have numbers for like the description.
Um, so those are our various electrical accounts. Um, those are water and sewer accounts. We, um, obviously, we, we belong to the Northern Illinois Purchasing Cooperative and that's who we have purchased.
The Land Management.
Yes, yep.
I just get to know the numbers.
Account numbers. Anything else? They're fighting, don't know how hot it is in here.
Most channels were perfect. So we turned it back.
No more question?
No more question.
One more.
One more.
You're not getting off any.
Thank you.
Page 13.
Yes.
13.
Thank you, New York's Melon. What do we pay them? $20,000?
Let's interest payer.
Interest payment on what?
On bond.
Anything else? Hit it.
Last one.
Hit it.
All right, I will entertain a motion to pay accounts payable in the amount of $408,894.69. Well, tell them exactly. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. B. Jackie.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Reed.
Stay.
Yes. Hi. Yes, we're next.
Any further, ma'am?
That is all.
Good job. Public relation.
Got nothing.
Nothing.
Sound exciting after a year?
Nothing else. Facebook posts later, sure. What are the village challenges?
It's ready for somebody, I think we've already got it. We have a planning and zoning delegation.
Planning and zoning.
Yes, we have a planning and zoning, actually, this would be the first official planning and zoning commission meeting on May 24th. All are welcome. Uh, they will be debating a petition for an amendment to amend the classification of certain territories, Hampshire Woods, from office manufacturing to general industrial zoning. And they would like to classify the general industrial zoning district as being an extra village. Also, they will be looking for a tax amendment to allow off-street parking spaces to be located in front yards and side yards joining a street in the M1, M2, and M3 industrial delivery. Or that property. Uh, no, just in the general definition of the district.
Oh.
Yes. Is that... I can speak to that briefly, but that's a tax amendment that I, I requested, so it'll be under my name. It's the Village Zoning Administrator. And that's, just generally speaking, in our manufacturing districts, in one, in two, and three, our set, our parking requirement setbacks in front yards is really onerous. I consulted with Safe built and they said it's more. That just came up first when our Meadows purchased the pet ag building and now they're working on renovating that in order to park it in front. Our minimum setback in front yard would require a variance. And when that came up three times in a month, I know that this board, as well as the planning and zoning boards in the past have all said, we don't want to drag people through variances. They're gonna be, they're gonna be timed. So this is a text amendment that will eliminate the variances with front yard setbacks that will make us more standard with the norms of the surrounding area.
Thank you. Um, and then I, I'm not sure if this is a planning, zoning, or finance issue, but I'd just like to thank Mr. Hedges for updating our mailbox reimbursement policy from $25 to $45, I believe. Thank you very much.
A good knock down some never.
Do enjoy.
Any further, sir?
That is all.
Public safety has at least incidents.
Yeah, if you guys look at your, at the graph, for the month of April, 105, uh, callouts to the police department. Uh, that doesn't include the normal radar and accidents and all the other stuff. So the police department's been extremely busy. Keep that mind as more and more subdivisions get built. What we're doing now with the current staff we have adding additional 2,000, 3,000 homes where we're gonna be. So they're, they've been very busy.
Are we looking, are we looking to add a officer?
Do you want to budget?
No, I can see.
Actually, Chief Thompson did request an additional police officer for this year. We could not fit him in the budget primarily as you're all aware, we did the additional $350,000 required by state for inspection funding. And it's something I think was justified. And we would have to reduce the amount of overtime required as well as chief's time we spend on weekends and our government third position of weekends. Um, it is something that we'll be considering in the future, but it's not in the current budget. I would also like to ask, thank Lieutenant Jones for being here tonight and for subbing in for our Chief Thompson while he's on vacation. He'll be back on Tuesday. So any detailed questions you have about your department, Lieutenant Jones is more than happy to answer them tonight.
Perfect.
I would not put it in right law. Good talk.
Very good, thank you, sir. Fields and trails, this better be good.
So it's going to be action now, which, yeah. So, um, first off, now that I've been riding my bike a lot, I think I maybe should have put more energy in field details.
Yeah, thank you.
So certainly, certainly, I just wanted to take this opportunity, because I wasn't sure when I was gonna have a chance to do it. But over the course of my 44 years of life I've had, which to participate in a lot of really cool and exciting things. Um, but I must say that this is one of the ones that I would treasure the most. And I know we, I got off to a rocky start here on this board, mainly because I didn't know how to talk at the right time. Um, and that's a warning to future people, there's a quick, a decorum. But I'm just grateful to all of you guys. And I am grateful for the work that we did. And I'm thankful for...
This is about field and trail for...
Yeah, this is all about field and trail. There's all the work I did in fields and trails. So I just wanna say thank you, guys. I, I loved it. It was a great time and a great experience. And I, I wanna wish good luck to all the incoming board members. And I hope that you carry on the work that we continued from the people who came before us. So thank you, guys, very much for the exciting year. And I hope the next person who was in this committee chair does. I did try, I'll be honest with you, it's a tough one.
You spent all, none of your budget money.
Yeah.
Four years, you spent a lot of money.
Very efficient, very diligent. But thank you, guys. Thank you to Jay, thank you to Lloyd, thank you to Josh, thank you to Linda. Uh, it was a hell of a night, it was a heck of a ride.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a brief comment. Um, I also wanted to just thank Trustee B. Jackie, Trustee Klein, and also you, Mayor. It's been a real pleasure working with all three of you. I remember in the back, we sat in this room when I was interviewed the first time. Actually, it was Saturday morning, also Tuesday night, and the night that you all voted on my contract. So it's been a pleasure working with all three of you. I will miss you, but I would really enjoy working with you, Laura, Heather, Lionel, and Mayor. Just thank you all.
Longest field and trail committee report we've ever had. I see you did last.
The best student is for that to go through. That's why we're looking out for the people. Looking out for the people.
$1.5 million of reserve.
It's under their metal watches.
Yeah, we started, they always have a lot to go. And there was a report, Tuscany Woods.
Tuscany Woods Trail of Dean Seacoast.
Yes.
I got my bribe from Mexico today. One last is, uh...
All right, Village Services.
I know we did vote on it earlier for, uh, the new direction for Jay to negotiate with the new vendor for refuse. I do want to, again, thank Mr. Hedges for leading that entire process and for guiding Village Services. I also wanna thank Trustee Coe and Trustee Robinson for serving on Village Services for the past couple years. Uh, they really do have good members, so, uh... There, I will leave it with this. This will be my last Village Services, like, announcement for... One of the things we learned in this, and I would recommend it to the new trustees to consider, current trustees of the Mustangs. The village manager really is our CEO. Owns the contract negotiations, the vendor negotiation, all of the process that happens with that. We, as a Village Services committee, completely embrace that during this refuse. We have no input as far as research, evaluation, communications with either vendors or the community. That was 100% on this, sir, Hedges. And it proved that that's absolutely the right person who should be in charge of those type of negotiations and these conversations. That our job should be strategy and taking his recommendation, discussing it, asking questions to seek understanding. And I feel like the Village Services Committee did just that. So thank both of you for being a part of that conversation, especially Mr. Hedges. And no matter what other committee contracts and negotiations come up, I hope that it's true to the Village's very same. So thank you for that. That's all I got to say about that.
Fabulous work. All right, any announcements before we adjourn, send die?
I'd just like to thank Ryan and Christine for their work. I know she, in, in, in the employee handbooks, there was a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of sweat and tears put into it. And you guys did a great job.
Thanks. Fantastic.
You're gonna miss me, aren't you?
Yeah. We're gonna see you tail lights.
Since we're doing announcements, I would also like to thank Trustee Klein and Trustee B. Jackie. Uh, Trustee Klein, this is the first time we've served together. It's been a pleasure. I know more now about development and what, what does belong and what doesn't belong. So I appreciate that. Trustee B. Jackie, you know, I've served in different types of boards throughout the years. We've had each other for a while, so it's been a pleasure. And to Village President Magnusson, you and I have served a long time in different capacities. So it's been a pleasure to serve as a part of your board. That's true, whatever that may be.
Thank you, sir. Always a pleasure. All right, we're gonna take a short break, then we will resume with...
Yeah, I know I thanked you three last time and I continue, thanks. But I also wanted to mention the, um, the election process that took place, how all of you, President Magnusson and President Lipt, Reed, conducted yourself just... I couldn't have been more pleased with the, the positivity that you guys both brought to the campaign. Uh, respectfulness of each other in the village. And I, I truly appreciated a good, positive campaign, and I'm sure a lot of others did as well. So I think you both should be commended on how you represented yourselves and the village during your campaign and throughout the election. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I adjourned, send die.
I could just, everybody, while the mayor leaves, uh, briefly, I just wanna remind everybody, after the next presentations, we will then have, we'll go outside before we adjourn. Uh, well, first of all, Jeanie's been nice enough to volunteer to take the pictures nicely. We would like to take an individual shot of the three trustees, as well as the existing trustees. Pete, uh, by the air column, flags over there. We're gonna get a group shot of all of you. We just wanna avoid the branding here, that's the only reason we're not gonna do it with the dice. So we can just do it against one of the walls of this two gardens. Okay? Some good pictures as soon as that, you know. In fact, Jeanie, if you wanna start doing headshots, I would put those now as singles. Heather, can you join us? And this is Jeanie there.
Hello. I'm great. The chairs are ready, ready.
Yeah. I'm sure.
I don't know. There's still this chair. All right. Slam. It's all you get. All right, I gotta go. Every stream and tigers. No.
So we've seen this, but it's been spitting.
Is he? It's just like... Okay, let's get a picture of you two. I couldn't realize I had to do that same time. They're just sitting next to each other. Never tried. I think he was representing the stock. I have many... That's right. I enjoyed, I enjoyed that this year. It's a lot, it's a lot. And I was gonna say... This is your... They make a glue that writes in the car. I guess you gotta look at these jobs. All right. This is where it's... I'm sorry. I think you're so... I'm sorry. But I gotta tell you... I'm sorry.
and six I drink out here I take every day
no it's that's different day
be the best oh sound of the sheriff sure yeah it's a dream I'll do it you win alright I will be reading I grab a seat uh we're going to uh put out a couple of plaques for our new trustees and first up we have Mr. Ryan Proggy village trustee for twenty seventeen twenty twenty one you may thank you where are you going also this trustee Klein we have a plaque village trustee twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one this time really worth it but I'm getting uh employee handbook done at least most of in our same area and finance audits and all that done really fabulous job and budget Mr. Reed you get a plaque for your years of service as village trustee from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty one uh you'll get another one obviously somewhere down the line you're getting so congratulations alright so that no now we're gonna do it reverse and you get to stay there so this is for you for all your years of service the village wouldn't be where we are without you you your capitol are way more worthy of more than just a plaque I think I hit my so this says uh Jeffrey Magnuson village president two thousand five to twenty twenty one honoring your dedication and service to the residents heavy careful it's real heavy than a softball and so we uh I called Dan Olson from Crown Community Development some of you know some of you don't know but Jeff has really been involved with Crown he that's what got him into this whole mess with um and so we worked with Dan Olson and I want you to open this or I can do it just open it don't look at it don't look Jeff don't close your eyes so they are naming a street in your honor very much speech speech that's a lot of signs for a street sign of the new street signs Bill you need to take this to the shop well thanks everybody and a look ahead
wait 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 all of I have been through picking and this is for you for me I'm gonna miss you
thank you thank you Ellen Tucker why do we have a new ballot I was told a rowdy group of girl scouts like Apple I think this will use my manager's head as well
no he got his own
oh he got his own
sixteen years
sixteen years of very nice thank you using on your kids
okay now he can use speech
speech no it's been great you know the village president and it's upside down there's a lot of violence but we have good people so all I can say to the new boards is why uh everybody you work with the people who are in charge of running day to day operations okay Klein Chuck Clark Mr. Hedges Mr. Dobson Mr. Schuster over there village attorney I don't know if anyone from PEI is still online but it's all a team effort you can't do anything by yourself because you need four votes so you gotta work together ask question and carry on I love what they have there maybe they'll graduate Sunday from the two-time offensive Emmy looking for a three D my wife Elizabeth oh it's a place
okay at this time I would like the three new trustees and stuff thank you all
I solemnly swear I will support the institution that I will support the constitution of the United States of the United States
in the constitution of the state of Illinois
in the constitution of the state of Illinois
and I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of trustee
the duties of the office of trustee of the village of Hampshire Illinois
of the village of Hampshire Illinois
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability congratulations I will be choosing the same
alright
remember your next phrase
now we're gonna do the village president take pictures okay raise your hand I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
I will support the constitution of the United States
I will support the constitution of the United States
I will support the constitution of the state of Illinois
I will support the constitution of the state of Illinois
I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of office
the duties of office
president of the village of Hampshire
of president of the village of Hampshire Illinois
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability it's a gavel and and it says mayor Mike two thousand uh May sixth twenty twenty one moving Hampshire forward together alright it's not but you're in charge
we got teachers here
okay works okay so we're greeted be welcome uh new business Mr. Mayor if you could please establish a forum Mr. Mayor we would ask your uh consideration on resolution changing bank signatures all the documents have been prepared and uh the resolution is provided by the clerk okay so this is um resolution basically this comes down to we operated a long time as a village administrator and so uh village president Magnuson always signed the checks there's no statutory requirement for the village president to be that we established based on what trustee Kelly was saying where um the the village president uh board should be regulated at an operational so one of the things that we're doing or what I would be proposing that we're doing is removing the village president from being a signature and it would be the village manager the village banking instructor do uh there any questions or comments okay I'll entertain a vote oh I'll make a what I'll entertain a motion to uh to create a resolution authorizing signatures for the village of Hampshire bank accounts
second
questions or comments what resolution number with the oh six twenty one oh six it's a little rough but we'll get it um okay can I have a can I have a roll call vote please
Ms. Boden
hi
Mr. Kelly
hi
Mr. Coe
hi
Mr. Matt
hi
Ms. Paul Sweeney
hi
Mr. Robinson
hi
motion passed six years
congratulations Mr. Mayor on your first one so the next on our agenda is as you know we are we combined our planning zoning commission we sent this out in the packet earlier uh Mr. Marak has been extremely instrumental in trying to figure out who is going to serve and why that kind of thing um Mr. Mayor can you help me yes I would like to help you sir uh at this time Mr. Mayor we would ask you can entertain we'd ask your consideration of a motion to appoint approve the appointment of Aaron Kelly to the business development commission for a two-year term uh one trustee is required on the on the economic development commission and I believe that's your requirement I might add myself stay on there Sam perfect so uh so trustee Kelly is interested or in serving alongside um uh we should have done the other way around but uh trustee former trustee Proggy uh on the business development commission apparently my son's looking all the ground and grappling cause I just heard of the alpine mom so so I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint here a trustee Kelly to the business development commission for a two-year term so second questions or comments
I have a comment just for the board to understand before vote this is not for the chair of that committee as was traditionally held by a trustee this is to be a member of that committee speaking to village president Reed and village manager Hedges my recommendation was that somebody else be named as the chair of that committee and then I just said it's the trustee
and 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 for further this business development commission has been flailing for many 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 years until Ryan Proggy got a hold of it and moved it forward he needs to stay on that BDC my recommendation was and my condition of accepting the nomination to be on the commission was that Brian Proggy citizen be considered as chair of the BDC and that was one of the conditions that I asked
yeah he's just a bit of a job
any other questions I have roll call vote please
there was that's right that's right I was in there
come on I'm messing this back up and off later
I'm trying to take some off here
Mr. Matt
aye
Ms. Paul Sweeney
aye
Mr. Robinson
aye
Ms. Boden
aye
Mr. Kelly Mr. Coe
aye
motion passed five yes one mistake
uh Mr. Mayor at this time we would ask for a motion to approve the appointment Mr. Mayor, at this time, we would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Ryan Kretke to the Business Development Commission for a three-year term. And while everybody else is taking credit for this, I want to say that I also asked American, Mr. Kretke, it's been my pleasure to work with him now for eighteen months, and the commission's really been a remarkable job. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ryan Kretke to the Business Development Commission as chair for three years.
Hold on, hold on, can I enjoy my time off for another minute? I'm enjoying my vacation. Well deserved.
Questions or comments? That haven't already been said? And I have a roll call vote.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Boden?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for a motion to approve the following appointments for planning the zoning commission. Hank Hoffman for a one-year term, Tim Wessel for a two-year term, Rich Grumman for a three-year term, Bill Rosetti for a four-year term, Brian Rock for a five-year term, Aaron Neal for a six-year term, or Ash for a seven-year term. Let me just remind the board, and the new members of the board, that these terms are mandated by state statute. We have terms of one through seven years, anytime a new board is appointed. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would consider that motion, please. I'll entertain a motion.
I think there's recent questions. Yeah, I have a question, your years, they just don't match next to the names in the packet.
I was looking at here, so what you can.
So, I have one year for Hank Hoffman, two years for Bill Rosetti, three years for Tim Wessel, four years for Richard Grumman, five years for Brian Rock, six years for Aaron Neal, seven years for. It is somebody or something. I think Tim Wessel and Bill Rosetti were blocked. I just want to make sure, are we voting for those on the packet or what?
I think the packet differs from Mr. Rock's list of people as well.
So, is the agenda correct or not? So, the agenda.
The agenda does not match with, yeah, I have Brian's note. Rosetti's for two, Wessel's for. That's what's in her packet, okay.
So, the packet is correct.
There you go.
So, I was reading a lot with the West side on. Okay, and one motion to approve all these. So, Hank for one, Tim for two, Rich for three.
That's what we need to decide, I just need to know.
That's what I'm trying to figure, Mr. Rosetti for two.
That's the agendas, I give you.
Mr. Wessel for three, Mr. Grumman for four, Mr. Rock for five, Aaron, Mr. Neal for six, and Mr. Rabbit for seven. Are you okay with that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Did we interview these people to make sure that Larry wants to stay for seven years?
I did, I generally tried to follow their initial date of appointments. Just seemed most fair to stick with that number. Mr. Hank Hoffman, as I noted, is graciously including an extra year of his service. I did want to keep his knowledge, based on those fifteen years of the DVA. Definitely wanted to keep that knowledge that he was born with a new applying board. Obviously, he will be bringing some of his DVA experience, and obviously, on some technical, we bring our experience along with us. Wanted to keep everybody as much as possible in every board.
I am on the call if anybody has any questions. Mr. Rabbit is on the call, oh, as well.
Can I ask, how was it decided who gets the one year, who gets the two year, who gets the three year?
That was based on just their initial date of appointment.
And Hank was really easy, Hank said he'd only serve if he got the one year job. Okay.
Promise with cake.
Does this nomination include Mr. Rock as chair of that?
Yes, that's what our nomination would be.
For ordinance, it's actually the mayor to officially announce that nomination. This is just really fun to see. So, I don't see that nomination.
One final, Mr. Hedges, maybe you can help me with this one. So, Mr. Hoffman's term is up after one year, within his term go to a five-year term?
Correct.
And so forth? I'm gonna actually defer to Brian Rock.
Yes, it would for the state statute that is, on any new board permission, you have to do the staggered or escalator appointments, and then once those expire, you do fall back to the standard of the statute, particularly the current five years.
So, this will be, we will be matching up with five year, five year until?
Year seven. Like, not even year.
No, like, year twelve. I don't even know, I can't, I don't have a, we're empty calculator.
That's okay.
Okay, I just, so essentially, it's going to be, three members are up one time, and then three, four members will be up.
No, basically, we should have a new seat come up every year, once we get through this.
Oh, it will be every, okay.
Once we get through this first seven-year cycle, everybody falls down to the standard five-year cycle. Because of that initial seven-year cycle, everyone should, every seat should come up for renewal at least once a year.
Yeah, it will be, so in year six, two seats from that point forward.
Okay, I follow you.
Twenty twenty-seven will be the first year.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a roll call vote? Or did I get a motion, no, I didn't get a motion. Sorry, can I have a motion to approve the appointment with, again, Mr. Rock being chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the committee?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Boden?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, at this time, this one does have a seven in it, but I think the math's a little more simple. We'd ask your consideration for proclamation setting May seventh as Jeffrey Armagneson Day in Village of Hampshire. So, I am going to read this, hopefully. Whereas Jeffrey Armagneson was elected Village of Hampshire president in 2005, the same year that the Chicago White Sox won the World Series, and Mr. Magnuson graduated from Peloton High School in 1982, is currently employed by Alpha Graphics in Crystal Lake, and whereas Mr. Magnuson is an avid Chicago White Sox, Minnesota Vikings, Chicago Blackhawks, and a tall fan. Whereas Mr. Magnuson has been married to his beautiful wife Elizabeth for twenty-five years, and whereas Mr. and Mrs. Magnuson have four children, Thomas, Olivia, Lucy, and Sophie. And whereas the Magnuson's moved to Hampshire in 1998, whereas Mr. Magnuson served as village president and liquor commissioner for sixteen years from 2005 to 2021. And whereas during his time as the village president and liquor commissioner, Mr. Magnuson has made significant contributions to the village and demonstrated a commitment to ensuring the welfare of the village and its residents. And whereas Mr. Magnuson is a pillar of the community and his contributions to the village should be recognized, and I, now therefore, I, President Michael Reed Jr. of the Village of Hampshire, on this sixth day of May 2021, do hereby proclaim that this village honors and recognizes May 7th as Jeffrey Armagneson. Okay, so now it's the part where there's any announcements. Anyone have any other notes? I want to remind us all about the event tomorrow afternoon. Tomorrow afternoon, about, starting at 4:30, there will be a open house, if you will, at the Red Ox in honor of Jeff Magnuson, so.
The what ball?
So, bring your family or friends, and let's come out and honor a good man. Does anyone else have any other announcements, or anything they'd like to say? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Boden?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion passed six zero.
That's it.